We'll call the Wednesday, the Tuesday, sorry about that. November 9th meeting to order. And Shannon Heron is going to come and bring us our invitation.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Craig. Father, how we thank you for the many blessings that you pour on us individually and as a city. Father, tonight as we meet to do the business of the city, I pray that you would bring wisdom to our city council members. Father, that they would be enlightened and encouraging. Father, and that everything that we decide and do tonight would be, would bring honor and glory to your name. Father, I pray for our city employees, Lord, that you would give them encouragement and joy as they go about their daily business. And Father, for those families who make up our community, Lord, I just pray for prosperity, for jobs, for health, and for a spirit of community to grow among us. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
And Ryan will bring our pledge.
Please go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is to review, update, and overview from Jacob's engineering on the City of Griffin's comprehensive transportation plan. Branch, who's going to introduce them?
Jennifer King here is representing Jacobs. This is our second update to y'all to let you know where we're in the comprehensive transportation plan process. And I've got a short presentation I want to make to y'all for your comment. Thank you.
I want to thank you for having us here again. Just like Dr. Keller said, I'm here to give you a brief update on where we are in the comprehensive transportation plan process.
Jennifer, would you pull that mic down just a little so you're speaking directly? And thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
All right. This slide just gives us a little overview of what I'm going to talk about this evening. I'm going to do a quick review of the purpose of the CTP and the process that we use in developing the transportation plan. And then get to the meat of the presentation, which is really going over the multimodal recommendations that have resulted in the planning process. And then talking a little bit about the funding considerations, which is very important stuff in getting these projects moved forward into implementation. As Dr. Keller mentioned, we, the purpose of the CTP is really, it's a process that ARC uses to ensure that all of the jurisdictions within their region are continuously looking at the long-range transportation needs. And in order for a city or a county to get projects programmed into the ARC's transportation plan and to get funded, they have to keep an updated CTP. So that's one of the purposes of this study. It's also, one of the important steps of the study is to update the travel demand model, which is an important step, an important tool that ARC uses in identifying capacity projects for the region. And really, the result of this is a program of multimodal transportation improvement that best meets the needs of the city. Next slide, this graphic gives a little information about the study process and where we are in the study process. The boxes that are highlighted in black, I know it's kind of hard to see, that green's a little dark too, but they show the completed phases of this process. And basically, these include identifying community goals and objectives. This was one of the first steps. And then evaluating the existing conditions, which we did thoroughly by looking at existing data, by doing field visits, and by talking with the city about what the existing issues are and what the needs are of the system. And then we applied the travel demand model, which is that ARC's travel forecasting tool, to the network to see what the capacity needs were. And then resulting from that analysis and again, talks with the city and other engineering analyses, we developed a program of projects with cost estimates. And that's what you all see before you, that's what I handed out. And this includes recommendations from previous studies. It also includes recommendations that we have identified in addition to those previous studies from the analysis that we performed. And then the next step is to prepare the long-range transportation plan, and that'll be the next step of our process. Now I'm going to go through real quickly what needs were identified, what multimodal needs were identified for the City of Griffin. In identifying roadway needs, there's several aspects that you need to look at. The first that I'll speak briefly on are the safety needs. And the way we identified safety needs was to look at high crash locations based on GDOT crash data for several, for three years. And that, this map represents some of the high crash locations. And what we did with this is we looked at those high crash locations, we made sure that either there was an improvement recommended through one of the previous LCI's or the Spalding CTP. And if there was not an improvement recommended at these high crash locations, we looked at identifying new improvements to be included in the list. Next slide talks about operational needs, which includes signal, timing projects, as well as intersection improvements. And you all have done a wonderful job in identifying these needs through the last CTP. So we, one of, our recommendation is to continue to implement these signal and intersection improvements that are identified through the previous CTP, as well as through other LCI studies.
May I interrupt you?
Sure.
On your last slide, I've been looking for the Experiment Street Broad Intersection there at, is it 10th? Which I didn't see anywhere, which has been a project in the city for a long time, that mess there. Is that in a previous, previous CTP? It's not listed here.
I believe that is one of the projects. I'll have to look back.
So it's being brought forward, but it's not on this list?
Right. But there's, if you'll see, there's a line item that talks about just, I think it's intersection improvements, and there's a funding attributed to that. And it doesn't have specific projects listed in there, but that funding would be to cover...
Oh, okay. Intersection improvements lines, that's buried in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The last aspect of the roadway network, again, is capacity improvements. This would be widening and new roadway locations. And as I mentioned, the ARC's travel demand model is the tool that is used to identify these capacity improvements. And most of these had been identified through previous studies, but our work to update the travel demand model was just used to validate these recommendations. So this, this shows the future 2030 E plus C network. The segments shown in red are those sections of roadway with capacity needs. You'll see North Hill Street is one of those roads, and that's an important thing to point out because it's not necessarily recommended that you could go through and widen North Hill Street, but it indicates the need for that, for the Griffin, South Griffin bypass. So these are the kind of issues that we looked at in identifying roadway needs and thereby recommendations. To summarize, the roadway needs for the City of Griffin are to continue to support the Griffin bypass, to assess additional needs for railroad crossings in downtown. This was one of the issues identified by the city as needed improvement. And also, additional connectivity. There was additional streets identified through several of the LCI studies, and these have been included in the project, in our needs plan recommendations for roadways. This just summarizes some of the major improvements that are included on that list, so I won't go through them. But it just points out, again, one of the major recommendations is that South Griffin bypass. There needs to be focus on continuing to get funding to get that implemented, as well as key projects from all the LCI studies that have been done here. Those need to have continued focus on getting them programmed into the long-range transportation plans that ARC holds. Another mode that we looked at, transit recommendations. One of the, I guess the big ticket item here is again commuter rail. So continued support of studying commuter rail and getting it funded and implemented. And then supportive services that would complement this commuter rail, such as BRT serving, bringing commuters in so that they can get on the commuter rail. And the final mode that we looked at is the bicycle and pedestrian network. There have been multiple recommendations from all of the LCI's that are continued forward in this plan. We've got those programmed into our needs plan recommendations. And also, the city has identified additional sidewalks that are shown in yellow on this map down here. If you all have a chance after the meeting and want to come up and ask any questions about those projects, those are also included line by line on our project recommendations sheet. So that's a broad overview of the projects that are in our needs plan. And basically, what the needs plan is, is everything that the city would want to implement if they had unlimited funding. And we all know that that's not the case. So our next step is to develop a financially constrained five-year program for the city. And the first thing we need to do in order to do this is really understand what the funding options are. So I will be working with the city to get a budget for this capital improvement program within the next couple of weeks. And we'll look at all kinds of funding options, including community block grants, SLOs funds, LCI funds, as well as other state and federal resources to get that budget for the capital improvement program. And then once we have a budget, we'll take, we'll take that needs plan, prioritize the projects in it, and come up with a financially constrained plan that meets that budget. So that's what, that's really our next step in this process. Again, this last slide really kind of just summarizes where we are. And again, the critical next step is just coming up with that budget for the capital improvement program. And then our, once we, once we do that, we'll have our needs plan, our capital improvement plan, and we'll develop the documents for the CTP.
Does anyone have any questions?
Public input, are we going to have some public hearings?
That was really the purpose of these city commission meetings. We advertise them in the paper and...
But this is it?
Mm-hmm. We have, I forgot to mention that, we do have comment forums for anybody that wants to, so I'll comment forums, take them back to anybody. There's information on them if you want to send them back to me.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Couple of questions, if you don't mind. The third project on the long sheet there is the ARC Plan 240, the median on 1941, Ellis Taylor Street. We'd originally talked about scrubbing that project and putting the money for that towards the Ellis Road Bridge project. Are we looking at putting medians in there?
No, no, it's staying in there until we get the Transportation Bill passed so that we can redirect David Scott's money to the intersection design and all of the...
And then on the Popper Street, the Bourbon Street Connector Road, that dumps into the front door view of Geo Griffin Campus, I think we need to relook at that connectivity possibly, but dumping it into the Ellis Road intersection and figure out how to run that all the way from North 9th Street to North Hill Street, on over to North 2nd Street, eventually over to 155 to where hopefully the airport will be, and some type of economic development parkway. I mean, taking, using Bourbon Street, which is a residential street, as a traffic flow area to me, doesn't make much sense. We need to look a lot more long-term. If we're going to invest the money, we need to look at some type of developmental parkway that would empower the neighborhood there. And then the final item on these sidewalk projects, we're currently putting money in our SLOs for the current sidewalk projects, and some of the prices that you have exceed what we budgeted in regards to what our thoughts of the projects were going to cost. Are we going to be able to leverage the money? Do you know of ways that we can leverage our SLOs, the money for sidewalks, to ARC or to any other funding?
That's, that's part of what we'll be talking about in the next couple of months. But yes, ARC definitely has available funding for sidewalk projects, so we'll need to look at ways for the city to get positioned for those funds.
So that'll be developed into the plan in regards to overall how we can take our half million dollars and possibly make a million or two million, or whatever out of that? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, thank you so much for coming and making that presentation. At this time, we'll open the floor for citizen comments. The chairperson will open the floor for comments, and they should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing, or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. The chairperson reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that said, is there anyone on my left who would like to come forward and make a On my right, is there anyone who would like to come forward and make a comment? Okay, if not, we'll...
Madam Chairman, we have some scouts here tonight, I believe, that are working on their citizenship and their community merit badge. If you don't mind, if they could come up and introduce themselves and what troop they're with, so...
I looked at them when I...
If y'all don't mind, come on up and introduce yourself and what troop you're with. The boys will be participating in citizenship and community on December 4th, and then working with Salvation Army on December 11th, in terms of getting food together.
Right here, just say which troop that you, where you, what troop you're with, your name, and he said you're working on your citizenship badge. Okay.
We're working on citizenship and community badge.
Young man, if you will speak into the microphone, we are being videotaped, and I found out from last week that if you've got your back to the microphone, they can't hear you. So, and you might be, your handsome face may be seen on television, on YouTube at that.
All right, well, we are from Troop 2, right across the street, in for Griffin, Georgia, from First Baptist, and we're working on the citizenship and the community badge and the communications badge. This is required from both of those.
And your name?
My name is Matthew Jenkins, and this is my brother Luke Jenkins.
Okay, very good. You're welcome.
They're sons of James Jenkins. All right, very good. It's a pleasure to have you.
Glad to have you with us tonight.
We salute you, Matthew.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go into public hearings. Public hearings are held to, are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy developments, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. At this time, we will receive comments regarding a conflict of interest statement for the City of Griffin's CDVG block grants for 2009, 2010, public facility grant awards. The City of Griffin is a community development block grant recipient for these two years in the amount of $500,000 each. 24 CFR Part 85 states in a relevant part that no employee, officer, or agent of any grantee or sub-grantee shall participate in the selection or in the award or administration of a contract supported by federal funds if a conflict of interest, real or apparent, would be involved. Disclosing a conflict of interest for either residing or owning property within the 2009 and 2010 CDVG award areas are Commissioners Cynthia Reed Ward, William Evans, and Douglas S. Holberg. Frederick Gardner will address.
You're recusing yourself, leaving Mr. Evans.
Excuse me, Commissioner?
He wants you now? He wants you now?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we've already voted.
What if I don't want to?
As part of this process, because we're not taking a vote, it was his recommendation that you guys don't have to leave. And I'll be asking the commissioners a question and then asking the board the same question as it relates to us adhering to DCA's request for public disclosure. And I'll read in its entirety the memos circulated by the city attorney as it relates to our grant. The City of Griffin is a community development block grant recipient for 2009, 2010, public facilities grant in the amount of $500,000 each. 24 CFR Part 85, subsection 8536B3 states that in relevant part, no employee, officer, or agent of the grantee or sub-grantee shall participate in the selection or in the award or administration of a contract supported by federal funds if a conflict of interest, real or apparent, would be involved. In making application for the 2009 and 2010 CDVG Community Development Block Grant, Public Facilities Grants, Commissioners Cynthia Reed Ward, William H. Evans, and Douglas S. Holberg in duly convened and meet a community need for particular urgency, i.e., in this case, rehabilitation of public water and sewer infrastructure. The Tomston Mill Neighborhood Village has been repeatedly identified through studies as one of the most blighted communities in the City of Griffin, with an ordnantly large percentage of housing and rental occupancy. The CDVG target area was selected by Project Engineer, Public Works Department, and the Community Development Department with guidance from the city's grant writing specialists. The members of the board of commissioners play no role in the selection. Georgia DCA has requested the city advertise and conduct this public hearing for the purpose of obtaining citizen involvement in order to complete its review of the city's request for an exception. Persons interested in commenting upon the grant of an exception may do so at this time.
Do we have anyone who would like to come forward and issue a comment concerning this public hearing? If not, go ahead, Frederick.
A listing by the commissioners of real property owned by or under the control of a commissioner by virtue of family or business relationship is attached. And I'll read into Commissioner Cynthia Reed Ward, 419 Polis Place, owned by Tyrone E. Ward and serves as their primary residence. Commissioner William H. Evans, 427 North 8th Street, serves as his personal residence. Commissioner Douglas S. Holberg, individually, with immediate family members or titled in Holberg's properties of Griffin Parkside Developers LLC. And as stated by Commissioner Holberg, the properties are 111 West Cherry, 115 West Cherry Street, 311 West Cherry Street, 315 West Cherry Street, 412 West Quilly, 451 North 8th Street, 539 North 8th Street are owned by Douglas S. Holberg. Properties owned by David Allen Holberg are 530 Orange Street, 427 North 9th Street...
424.
424, excuse me. 430 North 9th Street, 438 North 9th Street, 493 New Lane Street, 495 New Lane Street, 412 Georgia Avenue. Properties owned by M. Douglas Holberg Jr. are 504 Wheeler Street, 411 Polis Street, 415 Polis Street, 311 West Quilly Street, 313 West Quilly Street, 317 West Quilly Street, 321 West Quilly Street, 325 West Quilly Street, 328 North 9th Street...
420.
428, excuse me, 521 North Hill Street, and 445 North 8th Street. Properties owned by Griffin Parkside Developers are 111 West Quilly Street, 413 North Hill Street, 415 through 417 West Quilly Street.
You left off Lane Street.
215.
You left off 514 Lane Street.
That was, that was announced as owned by Douglas S. Holberg.
That's owned by M. Douglas Holberg Jr.
By Douglas.
By M. Douglas Holberg Jr.
Your dad.
Correct.
Okay.
Let me conclude.
All right, with that stated, are there any comments? Does that take care of our due diligence?
I hope so.
Okay, good. And at no time did the people who were involved vote on the issue, it was voted after they recused themselves.
And also, Commissioner, I have to ask one question of the commissioners as prescribed by the city attorney. Did Douglas, Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Holberg, and Commissioner Ward, have you reviewed the list, and is the list complete?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, sir.
And for the board, does any board member own or control property in the target area? And that's to the entire board of commissioners?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't.
Commissioner McMoone? I think that completes our due diligence as it relates to the conflict of interest.
And I agree with our chairman that at all times, these commissioners recused themselves, did not participate in any way, and conducted themselves above and beyond the call of ethics.
Okay, and the next item on our public hearing is to receive comments regarding a request to rezonate 25 plus or minus acres from medium density residential to neighborhood business district located at 319 West Tinsley Street. We discussed this this morning at our workshop, but this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and have a comment about this, this is your time to do it.
And I'll read into the record very quickly. This is rezoning request for 319 West Quilly Street, project number 10 REZ03.
West Tinsley Street.
West Tinsley Street. The applicant, Renanho Yusef, is seeking to rezonate property located at 319 West Tinsley Street, consisting of .25 plus or minus acres from medium density residential, MDR, to neighborhood business district, MDB. The request is to develop the site for a new daycare center that will serve working-class minority community within walking distance of their home. The planning staff recommended denial of this request as it did not follow the intent of the future land use map. However, at the meeting, the planning and zoning board recommended approval of the request not from MDR to Neighborhood Business District, but to MDR to Institutional with three conditions. The conditions are as follow: All buildings shall be constructed of brickstone, stucco, hardy, board, or any combination thereof. Final siding is prohibited. Condition number two: All new buildings shall be residential in design and be approved by the planning and development staff. Condition number three: There shall be no pole sign placed on the property. The applicant shall install a monument sign not more than six feet in height and 32 square feet in area.
And we added another, a fourth one this morning, that it's restricted to be a daycare facility.
That is correct. And the fourth, I think at the discussion we mentioned adding a fourth condition that would restrict the use of the rezoning for only a day, licensed daycare only, and that if any future requests would have to be approved, for changes would be approved by the board, have to be approved by the board of commissioners.
Okay, now I'll open it up for any comments from the applicant or anyone else in the audience.
Is the applicant here?
He's not.
Were you able to reach him in regards to...
No, sir.
Okay, well...
We, as typical, we do send them letters to let them know ahead of time the date of the meeting and the time of the meeting, however, the applicant is not here.
Right. All right, now we'll continue with item four to receive comments regarding a request for a special use permit to allow for utilization of an existing structure as a places of assembly overlay district at 350 North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia. Frederick Gardner will address.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioners, Divine Worship Center of God is, of Church is seeking approval of a special permit to allow for the utilization of an existing structure as a places of assembly at 350 North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia. The property is zoned fine commercial development, PCD, and a special use permit is required to designate the subject property as a places of assembly overlay. The purpose of the places of assembly overlay district is to encourage the beneficial development of assembly uses and to properly regulate such uses in a non-discriminatory manner. Planning and zoning staff recommended denial of this request as it does not meet the intent of the requirements set forth under the Places of Assembly Overlay District as it relates to road frontage and size of the property. The planning and zoning board recommended approval of the request with two conditions. Condition number one: Inspection to be conducted by the Griffin Fire Department for life safety and occupancy requirements. Condition number two: The special use is to be voided when the applicant vacates or abandons the use.
All right, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak for or against this request? Okay, hearing nine, let's go on to the next one, Frederick.
I think you have some, somebody's.
Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone, everyone's ready to play?
Um, I asked for this facility.
Will you give us your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Mr. Morrow.
We need it for the minutes, your name.
My name is Jackie Broner. And I am the pastor of Divine Worship Center of God Word.
And the address?
Is 350 Northeast Expressway.
North Expressway.
North Expressway.
And will you pull the microphone down so you can speak in there? Thank you, makes it easier.
You're welcome.
Thank you, now you go ahead. We got the formalities over.
Okay, um, I asked for this facility for the purpose of fellowship with the community. As I had stated with the City of Griffin, that we was having service in my home. And now, we need a facility large enough so we can not only house the people that are there, but the ones who want to come in and worship with us. And I'm, like I said to the city, I moved this facility from Forest Park, Georgia, down to Griffin when I relocated here as my permanent residence.
Any questions?
I do have a question, just, there are two conditions on this. The first one really applies to you, if you've seen it, that the inspection conducted by the fire department for life safety occupation requirements, the fire department would have to approve that and they'll have a maximum number of people allowed by the fire department. You understand that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. The other one doesn't apply to you because if you leave it, use, and so, that doesn't really apply to you, so. Do you understand the first one?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Right, and I think you understood the other one from the planning and zoning.
Yes, I did.
We appreciate you coming forward, Jackie.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, Frederick, we will now go to item number five to receive comments regarding a request for a special use permit to allow for the utilization of an existing structure as a places of assembly overlay district located at 1248 North Hill Street, Griffin, Georgia.
Yes, ma'am, TruWay Ministries is seeking approval of a special use request to allow for places of assembly to utilize a suite within existing, within an existing structure located at 1248 North Hill Street as a church or a place of worship. The property is presently zoned medium density residential and the commercial use, and the commercial use along this corridor is considered illegal, non-conforming. A special use permit is required to designate the subject property as a places of assembly overlay. Once again, the purpose of the Places of Assembly Overlay District is to encourage the beneficial development of assembly uses and to properly regulate such uses in a non-discriminatory manner. Planning and zoning staff recommended denial of this request as the property does not meet the requirements set forth under the Places of Assembly Overlay District. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval of the request with two conditions. Condition number one, inspection to be conducted by the Griffin Fire Department for life safety and occupancy requirements. Condition number two, special use to be voided when applicant vacates or abandons the use.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to come forward and speak for or against this application?
Good evening.
Your name and address.
I'm Bishop Rush Carroll.
Okay.
I'm the bishop of TruWay Ministries. We're at 1248 North Hill Street. We've been there, we've been there almost three years, so we don't plan on moving. You know what I mean? You know what I'm saying? We're there because we're needed in the community. That's, that's the bottom line. Myself and some of our disciples are here. I say disciples because we're not members, because we're not a club. We're an organism for God, so we're not a club, but we have disciples. And we're here because we think, we know that we are needed. It has been ordained by God that we be there. And so, because of the law, because I, Mr. Gardner and I, didn't, we're rivals. I'm Alabama State and he's Alabama and him.
That's not why he hates you, obviously.
I know, I know, but we had inadvertently put up, put up a banner. And we didn't know it was not lawful, but when we were told, we took it down. And that's why we're here, because we want to do everything by the law. We want to obey the law, but we want to be able to worship and to serve the small and high area. And that's why we're here.
Thank you, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I might ask you the same question. You understand now the fire department and their rules, you have to abide by that? Now that you're within the law?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
You're about to be within the law anyway.
And we know that if we leave, the special use permit won't go to anybody else.
Okay.
Very good.
Fair enough.
Alright, is there anyone now in the audience that would like to come forward and say anything? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Minister Gloria White, and it's 1248 North Hill Street. And I stand, because of the community also, it is a special need for us to be in that area. If you would consider looking back at the records, I think that because we've been there for three years and hopefully to be there even longer, the violence and the crime has diminished somewhat a lot since we've been there. And I believe that if you take a look at it from the time we've been there until looking at the previous before we got there, crime significantly has dropped. And I think, and I know that it's because of the spiritual covering that's in the area because we're there. And people have become to respect us and look highly at us because of being in that area and being the spiritual hospital that people need to run into. And I think a lot of people in that area will be more productive citizens and more productive in trying to take care of the community and to be productive in the community because of the church and because that we're standing as light to them so that they'll come in and come out from under the burdens that they're under and be productive citizens in the communities, in the city group.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and make a statement? Okay, if not, we'll now go to our, oh, one more, okay. State your name and address for the record.
I am Pastor Raphael Hodo, and 1248 North Hill Street. And I just want to speak on the behalf of our church and everybody else, and my dad, the bishop, and Minister White. They spoke on the behalf of the adults, but I want to speak on the behalf of the teenagers because I'm 19 and I am the senior pastor of the church. And I just wanted to say that the teenagers need us down there. Not only adults, you know, the adults that are around there, but the teenagers, the young folks need it, need the word too, you know? And I just wanted to stand on our behalf, you know, to support us, you know? That's all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda. Consider approval of minutes of the regular scheduled meeting on October 26, 2010, and minutes of the workshop on October 26, 2010. I think they have to be considered separately.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting of October 26.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay.
And Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the workshop, same date.
Okay, do I have, alright, a second?
Second.
Alright, all those approved, raise your right hand. Six oh, the first one was five with one extension, junior. Alright, now we're going to the regular agenda. And we will consider approval of a request to rezonate point 25 plus or minus acres from medium density residential to Neighborhood Business District located at 319 West Tinsley Street.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this rezoning from MDR to Institutional with the four conditions as listed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is.
Yep.
It is five, alright, those who disapprove? Okay, five, four, and one again. Thank you, sorry about that, junior, I didn't see that. Alright, consider, we'll go to item number eight, consider approval of a request for a special use permit to allow for the utilization of an existing structure as a places of assembly overlay district at 350 North Expressway.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this special use permit with the two conditions as listed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Alright, this is unanimous, thank you. Alright, item number nine, consider approval of a request for a special use permit to allow for the utilization of an existing structure as a places of assembly overlay district located at 1248 North Hill Street. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this special use permit with the two conditions listed.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Alright, number 10, consider approval of first reading of an ordinance to amend the city's water conservation and drought management plans as required by the Senate Bill 370 passed by the Georgia State Legislature in 2010. This was discussed this morning at the workshop.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Consider approval to a more bidding construction contract to Hill Construction Company Incorporated for the resurfacing of city streets, not to exceed $850,000 as part of the 2008 loss proceeds. Do I have a motion?
So move.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Consider approval to purchase and install Tokay software in amount of $16,995 for backflow prevention for the water distribution division of Public Works and Utilities.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the purchase at said price.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Alright, consider approval of the City of Griffin holiday schedule for 2011.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Consider approval of a request from the University of Georgia Griffin Campus for $17,500 for support of the continuing education program.
Madam Chair, I move, once again, we approve this as presented.
And a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Item number 15, which will conclude our agenda, is my appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board of David Brock to represent District Four. With that said, City Manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am, a reminder that I'll be out of town the rest of the week at the Georgia City Managers Training Conference. I'll be available by phone and email if you need anything. And the department directors will be available if you have any concerns. I think Ms. Hyatt reminded you this morning, but the Citizens Government Academy graduation class is Thursday evening at 6:30 at the Welcome Center. And we do have the extended workshop scheduled for the 23rd.
Very good.
And that's all I have.
Alright, Commissioner McMoore. I went to my wife's looking at.
I have no comments.
No comments? Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, once again, I would like to say that, and I have said in the past, that fellas are doing a great job with the city. I know the budget is tight right now and the economy's kind of bad, but doing a good job. Mr. Keller also, I'd like to see you when the meeting's over, okay? Alright.
Alright. Front and center, Dr. Keller.
Can you top that?
I don't think I can top that. But I would like to thank our city manager, Mrs. Kenny Smith, Mr. Bill Bosch, and Laura Stewart for a wonderful job. We had a city meeting with some citizens concerning the electric bills, the utility bills. And they came out and did a great job. We, I've had three citizens that called me and with, with the, say they have been reeducated on the utility bills. And I'd just like to commend them on a great job. And also, I would like to see you, Mr. Bosch, after the meeting. No, I'm just kidding.
Commissioner Moore?
Since this city and many of us personally and others have contributed the Georgia Pasture and Rail effort, there's been a lot of progress made. And the 17th, GPR is having a meeting in Oshin with our delegation, having Senator Isaacson, Senator Chambliss, Representative Wes Moreland, Representative Scott Fersher, and maybe some of the other Georgia delegation to work with our congressional delegation on funding for passenger rail through here and to help us with the political effort at the federal level where the, where the big money is. So, things are going well. We hope early in December to have a public meeting, which you all will be invited, and get an update on the progress of this project and keep moving it along. So, thank you for your support and stay tuned.
And we appreciate your efforts in this area too, Dave. Okay, Doug?
In regards to the DA's slap on the hand of the folks that were caught stealing thousands of dollars of metal throughout these, this region, we all need to spend a little time explaining to the DA our disgust with his position, as well as talking to our members of our General Assembly that metal theft is costing this community, the property owners, the folks that work hard every day, local businesses and governmental entities. So, I'm sorry I was not able to be at the rally that was on the steps of the chief. Please keep your guys working hard as you always do and we're going to keep pushing this issue and just.
By the way, within the last week or so, the county lost five over at the Cook Shopping Center and five more air conditioners at the senior senator. Plus, they had their vehicles, catalytic converters stolen off of a number of county vehicles parked over there. So, the county has taken a huge hit on this in the last about 10 days or so, something like that, so.
We appreciate the diligence, the diligence that you all are doing to search for this, for the people that are doing this. I'd like to commend the people who are hoping to lead us in a endeavor to improve the living conditions for our youth. If we bring a little religion into this community, it can't hurt. And I want you to know that I appreciate your efforts because you have gone into some of our areas where they are heavily populated, we've had heavy crimes. And if you can help us turn that around, we will become a great and growing city like our motto says that we are.
My blessing knew that.
And we appreciate you all being here tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.